All right, this is five thirty. Welcome, everybody. I will call the order of the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Monday, August twenty first. Please get a roll call, Marine.
Michael.
Here.
Company here.
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 Mommy.
Here.
Mommy.
Here.
Daddy.
Here.
Here.
All right, thank you. Item one point two, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, just a couple of announcements. A couple of really big developments last week. The Space Development Agency announced a big expansion of the Grand Forks Air Force Base, which could put up to another hundred jobs, high-paying jobs out there, which would get it up to about two hundred and forty over the long term, which is pretty exciting, and adding another enhancement that they need at the Grand Forks Air Force Base. And then follow that up, last week, that was Monday, we had the both senators in town on Wednesday for the General Atomics opening up their new hangar. So they're going to be expanding their operations and testing out there. So pretty exciting to see the developments out there. And then in this building, we had a couple of tours accompanied along with the Commerce Department looking at plotting a flag here in Grand Forks, largely in the UAS and composites field. So pretty exciting, lots of, lots of activity happening both at Grand Sky and here at the Hive. That's all I've got for announcements. So we will continue on to item number two, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Looks like there are none tonight. That's the first time in a long time. So we'll move right along to item three, public hearings and second reading ordinances.
Two point one, public hearing on issuance of revenue laws if they have an ultra council.
All right, we'll open up the public hearing on item three point one, and I want to thank Mr. Forkel for being here. Ultra always shows up, so we appreciate that. Anyone wishing to speak on that item? I'd seen no one will close the public hearing period and we'll move on. Motion approved with President Sandy, and I'm going to use Ms. Osowski as the second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries unanimously.
Point two, public hearing and second reading ordinance, and then zoning map to create JR's QD eleven number five, rezoning of the hundred block itself while we go.
Thank you. Same procedure, we're going to open up a public hearing on item three point two. Everybody here to speak on item three point two. Microphone. All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, item three point two, and open up the council's discussion. Got a motion to approve by Mr. Ligo and a second for Ms. Osowski. Any further? Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries unanimously.
And three point three, public hearing and second reading ordinance, so then chat rate, sign that will allow for home occupation to occur on history.
All right, again, this is third, third time that we've seen this, so I'll be looking to open the public hearing on item three point three. Everybody here to speak on item three point three. All right, seeing no one, public hearing period is closed.
I have some questions.
Please.
Comments?
Mr. Brooks, please.
But I don't know, I guess I'm concerned about this because you're now moving businesses into residential area. You're allowing them to be in an accessory building, right?
Yeah. Mayor, council member, Bean. In this case, we would be allowing them to occur in accessory dwellings. Currently, we do have the ability for home occupations to exist in residential dwellings, but in the living space only. So now this would be opening up the possibility of being in, in accessory dwellings as well, with the exception of we took out auto-oriented businesses as well as commercial channels as well.
Because what I was just looking at, I mean, your accessory buildings, they're usually going to be bigger and it's going to be a different type of a business often than what you can have. You can, you can run lots of different businesses out of accessory, though you wouldn't do in your own home. And it would seem to me that that's what zoning is about. Now, all of a sudden, you have traffic issues, you've got parking issues, you can have noise issue. You can have all of that that you wouldn't have in somebody's home, that you wouldn't have in accessory buildings, and the impacts may go beyond you and your neighbors. And that's much of why we would have what I would think of the zoning in place of your current behalf.
Mayor Bochinsky, council member Bean, thank you for that question. We still have the, in, within our home occupation, that any traffic that's over and above what would be intended for residential areas is still limited. So if you're getting more traffic in there, we do have the ability to pull that back. That would be more than what would be anticipated for residential neighbors and noise as well. So both of those are still, we still have that condition on there. It's not being added because it's already currently in zoning.
And you could say, pull what back there?
That, that wouldn't be eligible. So if you, if your noise is going beyond the limits of what would be expected within a residential area, you could, you wouldn't be eligible for home occupation. So that would automatically disqualify you from being eligible for that use.
Could, could you have, like, running sales or whatever continuously going in your garage?
Uh, that, that's currently happening today. So we, that, that could.
That'd be illegal.
I know, I know they are occurring. I've heard that from inspections today. To me, that wouldn't, I guess if somebody is doing that, they're doing that today. Yes. I don't know if we found a way to stop that period. I guess if somebody was doing that because it's, it's our, there are potentially some folks doing that.
Mr. Brooks, what was the, I mean, the original intention of this ordinance change was for what types of businesses that were taking place in essentially garages, accessory buildings?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We did actually have a request. Somebody was looking to brew beer. He was doing it in his home now. He wanted to actually do that in a, in a attached or detached garage. And I told him, well, you know, actually, you can't do that. He wasn't going to sell onsite to individuals. He was going to wholesale it and do keg it and then sell it to bars. That individual has, has found a different spot than existing spot, probably going to be a better spot for him overall. But we still carried it through. His, his arguments to us were, you know, Apple started in a garage, and that entrepreneurial thought process, a lot of those did start in garage. So when we kind of looked at it, I said, no, I understand. And once we did the research of Fargo, Bismarck, Maya, which is what we typically do, we take a look at the other cities around us, they do allow that in accessory dwellings. And we were actually limited, we were one of the few that did limit that as not being done. That being said, I know that there are some folks out there that are storing some material for their home businesses in garages today. And if we received a complaint, we'd have to go out there and take a look and probably find that they wouldn't meet our current ordinance.
I think it's great that at least he came forward. I imagine most people would have just started growing their garage, not said anything, so.
Yeah, there would be some that just don't understand that, that it wouldn't have been allowed.
All right, any further comments or questions, Mr. Brooks?
If I may, please. This is the, the same motion that we've already approved, just with the addition of the exclusion of commercial tenants. Correct. Yes.
Got a motion approved from Vice President Weber, second, second, second from President Sandy. Any further discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, fine. Action carries six to one with Bean the second. All right, we'll move on to item forces and comments related to action items.
Have none.
All right, we'll move on to item number five. We've got action items. I don't think staff had any that they needed directly pulled, so. I think there are some that council wanted to pull related to signs.
Thirteen and fourteen.
Five point thirteen, five fourteen. And I'll just wait here for just a few seconds, if there's any other items that council want to public, for the discussion, see anything. I don't see anything for Mr. Kavami either. All right, so we're looking for consent votes on items five point one, five point two, five point three, five point four, five point five, five point six, five point seven, which includes A through D, five point eight, five point nine, five point ten, five point eleven, five point twelve, and five point fifteen. Got a motion approved of Ms. Osowski.
Second.
And a second for Mr. Kavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries unanimously. So we'll be on to five thirteen and fourteen. I think if, yeah, Mr. Brooks, if you want to pop up here.
Five thirteen and signage bill for Grand Forks Park District, we'll get it out very shortly. I'll click this one five eleven seventeen.
All right, thank you. I don't know if council wants any further, maybe you just want to discuss what's, what's, what exactly we're looking at here. And we're probably going to have a round of discussion just on the general direction of signage throughout the community, so. Please, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. So this particular request came in, it's, I guess, a request from Oxford, but it's with the Park District. It's on their property. It's a, I think most people currently refer to it as Apollo Park. It's at corner seventeenth and Columbia. It's a little unusual in that the, of the four intersections, there's one that's in an R two. It's, it's the, the old Apollo, the all diamonds there. That zoning district allows for a park to have a signage. It is limited to, the square footage that's limited to fifty on one side and a hundred, or a hundred square feet total. This particular sign is looking to go eight foot high and square footage, I believe it's sixteen wide. It's in the staff report. The other intersections would be able to also go eight foot high on that commercial corridor. The planning and zoning had split vote, it was five to three. I believe some of the context I heard was limiting aesthetics and trying to be consistent with the, the rest of zoning. There was some talk of potentially even looking at rezoning for Apollo, for, for the park to be then consistent. We went to the route that we thought an appeal would be a little bit more appropriate as opposed to rezoning this to a commercial zone. And by doing that appeal, then the signage would be consistent. I don't know if the use would, if we necessarily want to change the zoo, use there. Oxford is, they have given some money to the Park District. I think this is part of that. And then there's an upgrade of signage going as part of the, the project as well. With that, the sign is pushed back. It is outside of our thirty-foot window by quite a bit, which we require as part of that. And hopefully I've answered everything, certainly able to try to answer anything, any other questions anybody has.
All right, open it up to council, any questions? Related to this, this particular sign, where, where does this fit in a normal Columbia Road corridor side parameters? How close is it to sort of what's already there, or is it already reasonable?
This would definitely wouldn't consist of the commercial signage, but the, the zoning on that park property is R two. It is a traditional residential zoning. Just because the park and the school property didn't need to, you know, it's consistent. The school and the park are able to go in and into a residential zone, so that zoning has never changed.
And what's currently there to let people know about where the park is?
There is a smaller sign that's just wooden back with the, along the trees that is just away from that intersection. There's some trees that are in the centerfield portion of the U and D softball area there.
Okay. All right, yeah, there.
How, how does this compare to the one just to the one seventeen, its size?
To the north, there's one that's at least eight foot high there as well. It's for the, I think it's called the Apollo Office Complex, and that one.
About the same size.
About the same size, is that correct?
And I, I think, you know, a broader discussion, I think Columbia is done, you know, Columbia Corridor is, is a great example. I think thirty-second Avenue is a great example. I don't think what's happening in Gateway in Washington long-term is positive. Quite frankly, we have a community that's striving for quality of life, aesthetics, appealing for visitors. I think we've got to look at Washington and figure out what the long-term plan is there, because I don't think it's working the way it is right now. This one, I mean, is on Columbia and largely in line with what's already there, but I think a broader discussion still needs to be had. I don't know whether it's during this or the next one, but that's just my thoughts.
Certainly, the ground monument signs have been, I think, they look better. They're lower to the ground overall than what you're seeing in pile-on signs on, along South Washington and Gateway Drive.
Right, President Sandy.
I mean, this, so this sign doesn't need sign code?
It does not, correct, that's why.
Much bigger than what's actually allowed there? It's bold.
Yeah, we didn't go with the height requirement. I think it was an overall square footage, and this was going to be bigger than what would be allowed in an R two.
Almost double.
I believe it's, yeah, I can't remember the total size, but it's, it's probably.
It's almost double.
Yeah.
If this wasn't R two, I guess, what, I mean, because clearly this isn't, there's not residence there. This is really the softball field part. It didn't probably get someone properly, because it was easy just to leave it.
Yep, my, my point in asking that question is it's not zoned for it, so why don't you fix the zoning before proving that? Because what's, I, I don't like picking and choosing. Feel like we're picking and choosing all the time. Okay, ultimately, I'm going to, I'm not going to support this sign tonight because of all the non-conforming signs that the Park District has about forty feet to the southeast of, of the sign that they want to build here. And so until the Park District fixes all of their non-conforming signs, I'm not going to support any signs from the Park District. They know the rules, or at least they certainly should know the rules, and they're not abiding by. Our Park District is not following city law. So I'm not going to support this tonight. If they can fix that, and then I think we should put this in the queue to fix the zoning, and then it looks like a great sign. What, what should the zoning be there?
Well, certainly, a school and a park can go in just about every zone, residential all the way up to commercial. So from my perspective, that's not an issue. I, I understand your point. But what I don't think we'd want is to rezone that to commercial, because now all of a sudden you do have commercial across from actual residences. So I would caution that. I do think the appeal is the better route here, only because then we're limiting the uses as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. That, that actually makes sense. I'm still not going to support this.
I, I completely understand your other issue, correct.
Right. Discuss. So there we go.
So I, I think, Mayor and President Sandy, I think I'll, I'll, I'll answer, and then you, please let me know if I'm incorrect, but the, the outfield signage that's in Apollo where the Apollo Soft, a softball complex is, they're facing out towards the right-of-way. Those should be on the inside of the fence. They should not be towards the right-of-way. That signage is meant to be towards the fans.
But don't be confused. They actually have signs toward the fans on that same stretch.
They cannot be on the outside.
They have twice as many signs as they should have, right?
Okay.
Are those signs one-sided on the house, or are they double-sided? Is that the issue?
They're one-sided.
So can we flip the signs over and get someone welcome?
Because there are, there are signs on the inside facing in.
Oh, so they're strapped the other ones straight on.
I, I do believe the, the building inspection.
Mr. Basically, what?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I'm, he's adding members of council. So we are following through, through the comments since, since a lot of last came up. I've been working individually with the Park District. There's some issues. I'm waiting for, waiting for a return voicemail. So the Park District can't speak for them, but they, they work with other marketing agencies. So if you look at where they are in non-compliance right now, that is U and D's softball. So I kind of get to run around, well, you got to talk to U and D, you got to talk to this person, you got to talk to this person. As of this morning, when I, when I went out to the Park District office, I do have a contact, I've yet to receive a phone call back. They did assure me that hearing comments last time that came from council, they are, they are working on it. I'm confident they're, they're working on it. It's not something that's going to happen overnight that they're, they're going to take it down. But we are working with them that they are non-compliant when it, when it's showing towards the street side. So they'll either have to remove them, or I'm going to give them to the end of the week if I don't hear about any business on Friday, then we'll take next steps, next step.
Going through the scissors and.
Well, I'd rather work with them. The, the next step in the process is actually taking it to Mr. Costin's office.
All right.
If we fall through.
We're not going to see that.
That's true. But we are working.
Well, let me know if that is the route. I want to be clear of that. You know, there are the clippers, but. All right, Mr. Kavami, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just had a comment specifically. I can't speak to the craft sign, but the other signage, you know, I, I professionally am a party to that marketing. So I would just say that we, yeah, we did get, get word of that, and that kind of came from the fact that there's signage sold at all the parks, and at that specific park, U and D has requested or required, I'm not sure of that detail, the interior. So all the banners that were interior were just flipped to exterior in order to maintain. So we're, as, as a representative of the agency that's, you know, hired by the Park District, we would be looking to create a solution as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kavami. All right. Any other comments or motions in council on that?
I guess I agree with Mr. Sandy. I think that, I, I think the sign is beautiful. I think it looks really nice. But I think that, you know, we should start complying with the code.
All right, Mr. Ligo.
Mr. Brooks, how many, how long is city code on signs?
Hold.
How long is it? How many pages do you think it is?
It's not very long.
It's eight, it's chapter eighteen oh three oh one of code, and it, it is fairly long, I think. It's about, when we start marrying it up with some other cities, but it's twenty-some odd pages, I guess I'll say. I, I don't know.
So I'm still scrolling through it, and I'm still, and I'm just got to the end. I think that if you have only a black and white code, you're going to have issues. We have Apollo Park that has a, I wouldn't call it decrepit, but less than desirable sign. They're looking to replace it with something that's much, much nicer. And we're, we're discussing yes or no to it. To me, it, it makes it look a lot nicer. If we have issues with the sign code, then let's address the sign code, because I don't, again, government gets involved in some of these things, and we have pages upon pages upon pages where a normal person couldn't look at this and read it and understand what they need to do if they want to have a sign. And so I think we've done this in the past with some of our liquor laws, and what we want to do there, maybe it's something that we look at signs. We've got a downtown design review board. We don't have a self-central downtown, or a self-central design review board. Like, we have all this stuff. I think we can, we can work through and apply some common sense to government.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ligo. All right. I think, I think if this were any other for-profit business coming, asking to build another sign on their property, and they had a whole bunch of non-conforming signs already on their property, it wouldn't even have gotten to us. We wouldn't be talking about this today because city staff would have told them, you have to fix your issues.
Right, you're talking to the Park District.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think, we're not trying to punish Oxford.
Certainly not. They've made a, you know, a large commitment, a contribution to this park, so.
I, I think, though, that there's a difference between non-conforming and decrepit, bad-looking signs, right? And so I'm willing to have the conversation on non-conforming versus things that are beat up, they look bad, they make the community look bad. You can see the signs on the backside of the fencing on Apollo and go to any other state in this country and see the exact same thing. And they don't look bad. If they're torn, tattered, flying all over the place, I would agree with you. But knowing that they are in good shape, I, I don't see the issue of that. And that's why I suggest maybe the code change would be a good thing.
And we can talk, and we should continue to talk sign code all day long, no problem with that. And I'm looking forward to this sign being built at some point in the future. In my opinion, I, I'm not going to support, we have to, we have the rules that we have. We have, we have to follow our own rules. So if you want to change the signing code, absolutely, we should go and we should have a discussion about that. But where I sit today, I just, I don't believe we would be providing this opportunity for anyone else. It's because it's the Park District. I, I just think the Park District should follow the rules as well.
Yeah, I mean, I respond to that. How often do we get sign appeals? I mean, like you said, it goes twenty pages long. So you still, obviously, it's not a hundred pages long, shouldn't, or conflate the whole issue, but.
We're getting more and more. It, it definitely is, there, there's, it's being pushed more and more, Mayor. But I will say, one, we could certainly, I don't know if this would suffice, but we could certainly put a condition that once they remove those non-conforming signs on the outfield, that this is conditional approval upon that.
So you're recommending conditional approval?
Then that would be at least a.
Other sentence, yeah.
Because I certainly understand the issue that that needs to get fixed. Contingent.
Well, ultimately, this is council decision, so. Do we need a motion, or it's going to back to a rival motion? So I'd open it up to council right now.
Oh, Mr. Bean.
We got a motion from Mr. Ligo. I'm going to take that motion and see if there's a second first and open up the conversation. Okay, we got a second for Ms. Osowski. So was that with the condition of the other? I just want to be clear here.
Without a condition.
Without the condition, okay.
I want to know this.
Okay. Okay, it sounds like your second's going to go with the condition. You'd find without the condition, or?
I'll keep it with the condition. Or, I'm sorry, without the condition.
Keep it without the condition. Do we have a second?
I, I will start.
All right, we got a second. So I'll open up to cut more conversation. Mr. Kavami, cut you out there, please.
No, no worries. I would just state that if it's conditional on any of the other signage, I'd need to recuse myself due to conflict. But if it's not conditional, then I have no involvement with the Craft Field project or Oxford or any of that.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, further comments?
No further comments, so.
Apollo Park is not the only place in town where the Park District has non-conforming signs. U and the softball stadium has non-conforming signs all, all around it. Like, this is not, this is not a unique case for the Park District. They are blatantly ignoring our sign rules. I'm, I'm not sure how to say this any, any more clear. The Park District doesn't care about the sign rules that we have. I believe we need to tell the Park District this is not okay, and I will not be supporting your motion.
Thank you. Any, any further comment, Mr. Bean, please?
I think to amend the motion to make a contingent on, who will be the other signs?
Of which signs now, just so we're clear.
That's the ones that we were talking about.
The ones just at Apollo or the ones at U and D as well?
Just at Apollo.
Just at, at Apollo. So, Mr. Dass, I listed the procedure, and we had a motion. Now we're looking, can you get a second first? Could that be?
You'd have to have a motion, or excuse me, area of motion, you need a second to amend.
So we vote on the amendment first, correct? We vote on the, we vote on the original motion.
If the, if the amendment is amended is approved, then the motion then to be voted on can be to.
All right. That's helpful. We got a motion to amend it to be contingent on the signs being taken, being in compliance at Apollo. Is that a fair way of saying it? Do we have a second to that motion? Okay, we've got a second to that motion. Any further discussion?
I, Mr. Mayor, I think I'd need to recuse myself from voting on this.
All right. Would someone like to, I think he stated what his reasoning is for being removed, you could get a, a vote to make that decision? Okay. And I'm just going to frame it for you as we're trying to do it to be correct, is that Mr. Ligo's motioning to allow him to speak with said conflicts with the intention of likely pulling it down. So we've got a motion, we have a second to allow Mr. Kavami, we got a second from Ms. Slusky. So again, if you're wanting to do your recuse, you'd be voting.
No.
No, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Both same side.
Aye.
All right, so, Mr. Kavami, the heat is off of you now. And now, any further discussion on the amendment to make this contingent on the signs at Apollo? All right, seeing Mr. Mayor.
Okay, again, without, without asking the Park District to make all of their signs conform, I'm still not supporting this motion. Thank you.
Are you going to support, I guess we'll find out. All right, so I need a vote on the amendment. So all those in favor of adding the contingent to the original motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side.
Aye.
I believe that was, that motion was defeated by a vote of two to four with Kavami. I believe that was, that motion was defeated, um, by a vote of two to four, uh, with Kavani, so we had. I believe just Osowski and Bean were in the. Favor, okay, so we got the other four, we got the other one, now we've got the original motion, uh. So now, Mr. Kavani, you would be back to being allowed to vote, so just so you're, you're comfortable with that, we're not having you vote on this, so now this is, um. Voting on the motion, um, to approve, uh, the sign, I'm gonna have, uh, Mr. Stursted, you wanna read it out on a roll call, random order, be great.
Soski? No. Weather?
No, no.
Igo?
Yes.
Antin? No. Bambi?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes. No.
Motion is defeated by a count of three to four. Reminding, item five fourteen. All right, if you want to give us some more insight on this one, Mr. Brooks?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, so billboards have been, uh, uh, certainly, uh, new topic, uh, recently. Uh, I'll quickly go through, about twenty years ago, uh, the city put a cap on the number of. Billboards allowed in the city of Grand Forks, um. That cap, uh, is specifically written in code, would increase proportionally after each, uh, census, uh, came through, so. About a year ago, uh, the city increased, uh, by eleven billboards, so. Um, that happened about a year ago, uh, hence the, the increase in billboards that have recently gone up. Including the request, um, those billboards, uh, used to have a cap of nine, uh, on South Washington, that was from. Demers down to the southern extent of the extraterritorial area. Uh, about a year ago, uh, that cap, uh, that used to be nine was removed, it, it went through ordinance to have that removed. It was, uh, shortly after the increase of the eleven. Uh, one of the reasons, I, I think one of the discussion points, just as, uh. Uh, kind of, uh, some background, we had one billboard company, uh, that was. Had all the billboards in town, it was Newman, uh, and we had a competitor looking to try to come in, uh, to the market, that was, uh, iDigital. Uh, Newman put up one of the new eleven signs, uh, that was on the, uh, former milk crate, uh, Valley Dairy, uh, sign. Um, that was, uh, their, uh, new billboard, um, the remaining ones that have gone up since, and I want to say there's been about four or five. Uh, those are, uh, through iDigital, um. One of them, uh, went through, I want to say last month, that was at the pet adoption, uh, about the eight hundred block of South Washington. Um, and now they have another one that they're requesting on the Denny's Farm location. Uh, which is just outside of that five hundred foot spacing, radial spacing, uh, that is required between billboards, so. This one is five hundred feet from the one that was, uh, approved last month. At the, uh, at adoption area and five hundred feet from the one that's in front of the Mexican Village, uh, strip mall. Uh, that's probably not the name for that, uh, uh, strip mall there, but, um, that's where it's at, about thirteen hundred block of, of, uh. South Washington Street, uh. Recently, we also, uh, approved two, uh, one at the hot tub area right up in front of the old Kmart and another one. At the U-Haul Marcos area, um, at thirty minute under block of South, South Washington. Um, so that's some background, the, the only billboards that do come, uh, forward by code, uh, for approval to. Planning commission of the city council are the ones along South Washington, all the rest, as long as they meet the spacing requirement, size requirement, zoning. Et cetera, those are done administrative. And, uh, that includes going through, city staff has to sign off and it goes through the state application process as well, so. With that, I'll answer any of the questions that you may have.
Well, this, I mean, uh, just briefly, I'm sure, there's a comment on this, I, I mean, us having different. We have so many different. You know, code designations, whether it's Washington, other areas, I think we need to have one. All encompassing in the city, I'll repeat what I said before, I think these tall billboards, we're gonna have a really open, nice corner on Washington, like. Think a lot of us want to see, I think we have to start phasing these out rather than adding to it, it's become so cluttered that it is. An eyesore for our city, I mean. At some point, we've got to start that transition away from it, it's gonna be unpopular for the billboard makers and the people that advertise there, but. So much advertising and, and direction, wayfinding types of, not even think on-premise needs to be looked at as well. You know, wayfinding's done so much differently than the past, you're using your phone, you're using your, your car, navigation, other things. Um, I just think we've got to start at some point at cleaning that up, or it's just gonna continue to just. Devolve into this, I don't know, the strip that's just not something to be proud of, but. I'm, I'm imagining some council members feel the way, hopefully the same way, hopefully all of them, but, um, why don't you start with Ms. Osowski, I think all, all three of you wanted to comment with Ms. Osowski. If you want to start, then I know, Slaski, you.
I guess I was, um. I voted for a lot of these billboards, um, I'm embarrassed to say that now, after I was driving down Washington and I believe it was the one. Um, that was on top of Valley Dairy, I don't even know where I was because I was so taken back, my eyes were off the road. They were, it, it was so distracting and all I could imagine is, you know, we get more of these up and down this road. It's gonna, it's gonna start looking like you took the wrong turn off the Vegas Strip, it, it was. I was not impressed with it at all and I think it looks tacky and trashy. So I don't want to see any more of these signs, I appreciate what the mayor had to say.
Slaski?
So just for clarification, we had eleven new billboards added, how many did we have before that?
Oh, our cap was at one oh one and now it's up to one twelve.
And, and why is it only nine on Washington or?
The, that was the old cap was nine and that's been removed, but the, why, I, I'm not too sure that I'd have to go back to. Uh, try to understand what their thought process was, but I think there, there was a cap of nine, uh, along that stretch.
So in Washington's the only one that had a cap of its own?
Correct.
So we can have a hundred and twelve billboards in the Grand Forks?
Correct, yep, that's.
That's based off of another population, it's like every five hundred, if, if you do six hundred.
Five hundred and sixty-six additional people.
So at the, at the census or the census estimates, that's what decides how many more signs, and then that quickly gets filled by. All the sign companies.
Fairly quick, yes.
All right, I'm sorry, I cut you off, I'm just working through it too.
Uh, so my, my thoughts are, um, digital signage brought me to Grand Forks, that's the reason I came here, um. And I even think we're getting a little too much, so I, I, I agree that we need some. Limits on there, I know there's a new one going on Washington, that's about fifty feet from an, an existing billboard, looks like that one was taken down. It's going to be replaced with a sign for the business.
Oh, on, on Demers, not South Washington?
Yeah, Demers, sorry.
Correct, yes, correct, that's a, um, Waylands, there was a billboard there, that's moved over to property one, uh, which is, um. Uh, right at the base of the, uh, uh, overpass coming out of the valley.
So is Wayland's gonna put up a sign?
There are gonna be an on-premise signs, I understand it, they haven't made a request as of yet, but they left the pole there because that's gonna be their on-premise sign. Uh, the rules on a I one area, which is what they are, a little bit different on signage versus Columbia Road and Thirty Second.
And then where will the one for the beacon be located?
The beacon will be located in roughly the same location as where the pylon is for the old, uh, hotel there. I mean, my, uh, money. Rivers.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Yeah, I mean, we can obviously ask more questions, but is, is everybody comfortable directing Mr. Gasta to just look in this, uh. You know, obviously, people make investments and there's, you know, legal side of this, the state and federal laws, but I think. Other cities have enacted, you know, certain things that the way the signs is, enough consensus here to direct Mr. Gasta to look further into that and come back with. A legal analysis of our options? Anybody that disagrees with that?
I, no, I agree with that.
Okay.
I, I was wondering, looking into what, I mean, are we?
So consider yourself directed that way, Mr. Gasta.
Potentially, would we look at eliminating existing signs, is that what you're thinking of?
I think in the long term, I think you got to amortize out some of the investments that people have made, but I, I. Personally, I think, uh, it'd be great in the future if Washington looked more like Columbia. And Demers and, um. Uh, Gateway, you know, these are our prime corridors that are, are seeing redevelopment and it's probably time to. Get them right.
And if it's a ground monument, signs potentially, supporting the poll.
Right, and I, I think we need to bring that code inclusive along the corridors, not have just one corridor that apparently was special, but. Didn't turn out to be quite special. Mr. Zapp, present, say it, please.
So in the five hundred and sixty-six per the census is a made-up number made up by the city council. Right, we made up that, that number.
Yeah, I, I don't know if anybody was here at the time, but yeah, it was that twenty years ago, they took the number of billboards that were at that time. And added seven because they wanted to give some, uh, additional, and then they basically came up with that five sixty-six because they took. How many billboards plus seven and then divided by the number of folks at that time.
Sure, but as time. As your population grows, your population grows faster. And so having a fixed number doesn't make any sense because then we'll be adding billboards. Faster to the community, I, I, I think, uh. I'm not interested, we, Brett and I were talking about this before the meeting, um. My good friend, uh, previous President Gershman, um, always talked about the grand entrance into. Downtown into the heart of our city, coming up and over the overpass. And now there is a massive electronic sign that gates over, that feels like it's hanging over the bridge. And we didn't even know it was gonna happen, not one of us on the council had any input into that at all. And I certainly wouldn't have supported that, that sign, and, uh, I would certainly be supportive of figuring a way. How to phase that sign out, I also believe that any large billboard type sign that's gonna go into the, the city anywhere. Should come before this council and, and not be done administrated, that's my personal opinion.
What, I mean, are these signs that aren't on Washington corridor, if they're right now under our code, if they're within compliance, as far as distance from other signs, they. Are illegal, I mean, ready to go, can we put a, a stop to that, in the meantime, as we dig through this, what would be, what could, type of action you need for council to, to do that?
I, we need to remember, first that, but that would be a potential moratorium, I think, is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So Gasta, please.
Yeah, thank you, um, there is, and just, you know, Mr. Brooks did speak to me, um, or communicated with me about some of the. Issues in signage and, and, um, there's an old case back, actually, you want, I. If, if not read it, uh, but it's kind of the seminal case, signage and, and there are some. Potential First Amendment claims that there are issues that exist, uh, with this, that's what that case, uh. Starts with, we start with that premise, um, and so, in the interim, uh, in anticipation of the council. Uh, having concerns and, and Mr. Brooks' request, uh, we've already started the process of researching what. The, the, uh, authority and what the limitations can be imposed with respect to signage that, uh. And, and try to get, uh, an ordinance that even a normal person can, can review and, and understand what the signage. Uh, so I, I get the direction, um, I wrote down, um, you know, limitations as to the number of signs. Um, trying to contract, uh, the number of signs that exist and, and the methodology to try to, try to accomplish that task. And, and my direction is to research those, make sure that we're following, uh, legally, uh. What can be done, so that's the direction that, that I'm taking from tonight's conversation.
And in the, in the meantime, obviously, it takes time, what should we manage, can we give direction to staff, maybe miss that part at the beginning, but what's the? What's our options now?
You've got an ordinance right now and, um, if the. Applicant has met the requirements for the ordinance, um, I'm not sure that there necessarily be. The basis to, to deny their request, if, if they've checked all the boxes and, and the ordinance is complied with. Unfortunately, that, that's where you're, where you're at.
Do we have the ability to suspend an ordinance?
Under an emergency situation, I, the mayor has that, that authority, um, but I, I'm not aware of. Of this council just, uh, declaring a, a, an ordinance no longer applicable.
Yeah, I'll go through your readings, yeah, okay, well, I think you're, at the minimum, your work needs to be, uh, a great idea, but.
Most, most of those would be ground monuments signs, though.
I don't, I, what I'm, I, this is not a ground monument signs, I understand.
All right, well, we still have the, the item at hand, so I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'll move the table. Item, uh, five fourteen until Mr. Gasta has had the ability to do his research and, and come back to us with his findings. Sounds good, I think we make a motion to postpone.
Yeah.
You're still okay with seconding that, all right, we got a motion, um, to postponing five point one four, um. Till that work has been completed and a second, so, any further discussion?
I think it's also. Important to point out that, uh, First Amendment rights. Aren't absolute and. Usually you have to be suppressing, suppressing a message. When we're just suppressing signs, so I think it'll be interesting to hear what Mr. Gasta comes up, thank you, Mayor.
President Sandy. All right, so we got a motion in the second, any further comment?
Sir, a- any public comment allowed?
Is this Mr., uh, sorry, I don't know who this is.
Uh, sorry, this is Josh Gillan with, uh, iDigital Outdoor.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, being your request, if you want to, if you want to speak, please, sub your time, say, say the name, state the name one more time, I didn't get the last name.
Yeah, uh, Josh Gilland. And, uh, G, G I L L E L A N D. With iDigital Outdoor.
Okay, Mr. Gillen, please.
Uh, sorry about my appearance, uh, we're on a family vacation, uh, went through the hurricane in San Diego and. A couple earthquakes in LA, so it's been an interesting trip so far, to say the least, so, um, but, uh, thanks for allowing me to speak. Uh, so, a couple of things, I, I just want to put some backstory here to, to iDigital. I think we've been trying to come into Grand Forks for about seven years now. Um, each year we've, you know, looked for locations, um, I think each one that would be found where, you know, a lease is expiring. We approach, uh, a landowner, um, work a deal with him, him or her, and, uh, uh. You know, approach, uh, inspections, planning department, we're not able to, uh, to acquire the location because it's non-conforming. So, you know, like as an example, on the corner of Demers and, and, uh, South Washington. There's five or six billboards there, we couldn't even acquire one of those because they're all, essentially all non-conforming, so. We've been biding our time and waiting, Grand Forks is the only major market in all of North Dakota that we're not in. And, uh. Um, I, I think we, you know, as a company, we really need to be there, you know, as a, as a statewide company. Um, we, you know, a lot of the customers that we do business with, um, are, are, you know, have businesses also in Grand Forks, so. That's one of the things that I think is, is the, the biggest part of the story here. That I want everyone to think about as, as you guys are trying to rework these, um, ordinances to, to do what you wanted to do. Is, you know, how do we make Grand, the Grand Forks market from a billboard perspective? Not anti-competitive, because right now, as it sits, it's, it's been anti-competitive, you got, you know, a hundred and. Let's say you had a hundred and four permits and the primary operator in that market has ninety-nine of them, right, so. Um, you know, how do we get a foothold in here, we've been waiting seven years to come, you know, it's, it's finally, it's finally gotten to a point where. You know, ten permits or eleven permits were issued and, and we managed to get nine or ten of them, um, you know, normally in a, in a. Typical cycle, like, we wouldn't come in and dump a bunch of boards in, in your market like that, we would have put one a year and nobody really would have. Said anything or noticed anything, obviously, it's more of a, an impact right now because you're seeing a bunch of them go up and. And it's even more of an impact because you're seeing a bunch of them go up in a much more concentrated area because the sign code only. You know, limits very few areas in town where signs can go, so, so that you're gonna seem concentrated in those areas unless, you know, the sign code opened up. To some of the other areas that are desirable for businesses, and I think it's important to note that. Billboards are probably your number one brick and mortar advertising medium, you know, for local businesses, right? Um, and we want to be part of the Grand Forks market, um, we want to do. Right by the Grand Forks market, we want to make sure it looks beautiful, we want to make sure our locations look great, we want to make sure that people say, wow, those are awesome. But I think we need a chance to be able to do that. And so as I'm as I'm asking you guys, all of you, city councilmen, mayor, um to just consider. You know, how do we enact this so that we can allow, uh you know, someone, another business to come to the market? Create a presence enough to compete with with someone that's dominated your your industry for your uh your city for the last five or six decades. Um, you know, I think the prices are way too high in Grand Forks. They're, you know, probably thirty, forty percent higher than in Fargo. And that that happens because there's no other competitors, right? So I think we can bring the prices of the of the billboard advertising down for the local businesses, which is uh number one objective for us. Um, we wanna be successful there and we wanna be a good partner, so. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and hopefully uh you'll be safe. Take care of yourself and your family. Uh any questions for Mister? Gillan, I might be saying the wrong. All right, thank you for input, sir.
Thank you.
So we have, uh right now, we've got a a motion to postpone to a future date. Do we have um further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to information items, item six. Thank you. Uh item seven, approval of minutes of bills. Motion to approve the vendor list, Mister Lyell, you have a second. So Solsky, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, do you have a motion as is or any adjustments? Motion as is from Miss Solsky, sent to President Sandy. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, same sign. Minutes approved as is. Um on to eight, do you have any? Miss Lee, please.
Thank you. Um one oh eight, thirty-two, thirty-one, word circle, word seven. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just have a couple of quick items. Uh first of all, I'd like to thank you for approving the salary increases. For our city employees. I believe it's important to invest in people and give them opportunities. Their members are our our community and we wanna keep good people. So I thank you. And I I hope that city employees know that they're appreciated for the work they do for us. And there's a lot that they do. So thank you again. Okay, second point. Public safety. Um last year, I listened to Chief Nelson. Give a presentation for a grant to a to have additional offices. Um I was totally shocked that we only have six officers covering our entire city during the day. And I know they add in the evening. And then I heard the number of calls that the department covers during the year. Again, I was shocked. I mean, the average person doesn't realize. The number of calls that the police department has to cover in this city and they vary. And some of them are, we all know, very difficult. So anyway, I I checked today's numbers on the police website. It's pretty informative. I've never been there before. Learning as I go. Okay, in the past six months, there were sixteen thousand. Six hundred and twenty-five calls. That's just in the past six months. That that's a roughly an average of twenty-eight hundred calls. And we have the finished audits. Um, the city is planning to extend our city limits, both to the north. And we've been talking about the big development to the south. That's a lot of territory, a lot of territory for six officers to cover in our community. And this is a, this is really important to me because I think um. I really believe police visibility serves as leading term. I want those officers out there. I mean, we see them on the main arteries in town. But they're also covering other areas when they get these calls there. It's not just traffic. I think it's important for our young people to see police in their neighborhood. And you can't do that with six people. So anyway, um in this budget, in this year's budget. And I know you're still working on it. And again, thank you for approving this for the employees and this is part of the employees. Um, I hope that the council will examine, sit down and examine the number of police officers that we have. And take a look at the area they're covering, the significance of having them there. And make appropriate adjustments. We invest and spend a lot of money in a lot of areas. We hand out money like it's candy sometimes, I think. But we're we're with our new initiative, talking about uh quality of life. Safety would be one of the big tactics, the quality of life. Especially for young families and we wanna keep our families here. If you have a community that's safe, you will bring families to second economic development. This, we watch what's going on all over the country. Let's think about this. Let's be proactive. And I really hope that I'll hear some discussion at a council meeting. And uh, thank you.
Miss Lee. All right, uh moving on to nine, city administrative comments, Mister Gillan.
Thank you, Mayor Wachenski, and members of the state. Also, in the spirit of kind of giving you a heads up, there's we got some big items working on it. Thanks to Miss Lee for the shout out on the salary plan and thank you to the state council and mayor for supporting that. Um just to comment on the police department, if there's one area that uh has been number one, no matter the administration has been public safety, so that's why. We look at the pie chart, uh most of the general fund. Um that's that relates to property tax and the general fund is really place fire in in peace house. And if there's one department that we have added over the years in in both administrations, it's police officer that, as I recall, right? A few years ago, we probably had around eighty-two officers and now we're at about ninety-nine. And so we really have increased in both administrations in that area. It's one of those things that uh once we get those fully funded, I I suspect they'll be back here asking for additional officers and. That was when the number one thing that Mayor Wachenski um really fortified that we wanna make sure we have great public safety, so. But uh anytime you want a briefing on that and even at the final approval of the budget, so really appreciate. Uh appreciate Miss Lee really emphasizing the importance that we don't have public safety. Um as our grounding, it's it's hard for us to say quality of life investments. So thank you for you guys on public safety part. I wanna highlight a few things. Uh number one, you approve something historic and I believe even at all it was. Which is the Forty-seventh Avenue Interchange Concept that's on alignment and on forty-seven, that's a big deal. And I think one thing we didn't get across uh last Monday is that we are going to be um strategically aggressive in getting that done. And so instead of just saying, you know, we're gonna hold for the best and, you know, maybe in the end of the decade. And so we're gonna do be more aggressive like other communities have been to try to get that project done sooner rather than later and and that means. You know, having the mayor go to Bismarck and discuss with the DOT and so if there's one um point I wanna emphasize is that. We are gonna try to get that done sooner rather than later uh as we move forward. And that's how you get projects done in the state is you have to just apply the pressure. Uh on in Bismarck. Number two, next week, another historic project, we're gonna bring the Forty-second Avenue Demerse to pass project and that's another fifty to sixty million dollar project.
Could you repeat all that?
Um so we bring the end of pass here, we'll be, we'll we'll come your way too, and so that'll be another similar to what you do with Forty-seventh Avenue Interchange. I think what you're gonna see is that uh more of an alignment to towards golf course, but you'll see that we're gonna ask again, ask you to approve that. So that we can move that project forward and in this case, you know, uh likely the DOT is in support of, we got that federal grant. And so we wanna move that uh to construction also as we move forward. Regarding the quality of life investments, we we are planning to bring that to the next county, the whole, so you'll Forty-second Avenue Demerse and underpass, you'll have a quality of life investment, so. We've been working this week with the um the users and the other our public sector partners regarding those facilities, so we intend to have a. Uh further information on, you know, that integrated facility and some of the feedback that we got. Number two, we plan to bring forward um some ballot language for you to review. At the committee of the hall and then some further financial analysis of trying to meet the needs of what the people wants from a. From an investment perspective. So we will have that in front of you and uh we'll we will likely ask you to. Um recommend to move that forward to the following city council, which would be after uh Labor Day. We talked about getting into September and if you're so willing, I would get to in November, bro. So we'll have hopefully have some more details and more specific language for you to consider at Monday's committee of the hall. The other thing we that we've been working on that's really critically important is uh the waste park plan renewal and expansion project. Again, it's hard to believe, but that's that's probably an eighty and ninety million dollar plus facility that we worked on at the same time we've worked on all like. Uh uh all these other um projects, so you improve phase one, we gotta come back to phase two, which is the expansion of the waste park. And so we're gonna give you an update on that where we're have that particular project. Um we spent a lot of time talking about quality of life, but we have lots of essential facilities that we need to get accomplished similar to public safety that we could work. Or out doing, we we deserve an update in that regard because these are monumental investments that we're making in our community. The other thing we had an opportunity to discuss today is with the Beacon by Epic project. And uh they two two of those buildings are going up and as you recall, there's a public event space um that's in the middle. And then there's a third building and right now we've been, we discussed with the developers, they'd like to see uh a portion of that that third building that. Front Demerse Avenue to be a hotel um on the lower levels and then the upper levels with the apartments. There's some concerns with parking and and, you know, changing, you know, PUD calls for. So likely that'll be in in front of you for further consideration uh as we with that project. The other consideration you heard today is uh if we change some of those concepts, right now we have, I'm gonna say a sixty thousand plus public square. They're proposing something that would be smaller, larger than what they have at West Fargo on the events, but maybe smaller, so. There's some some modifications um that we're considering as as part of that as we move forward, so you should know that's uh. We're gonna work with them and and uh what we said is that we'd likely have to review the concept. Um start moving that forward through state council and have you review that. So there's lots of moving parts out there, lots of things that we're working on. That are gonna be transformational and as Mister Sandy, you noted or somebody noted on that large sign, I think this this sign now that will go on top of that pylon sign would. Probably is, well, it will pale in comparison to what's already there um at that point in time, so. They they need some decisions. Their goal is to open up that public event space in June of twenty twenty-four. And so likely we'll have to bring that back sooner rather than later, so they can make some final decisions on construction for that. One last thing the Marine is waiting on is that we have to sell a bond for that public event space. And so we have to have some direction on how we're gonna move forward before we sell that bond. We're estimating that to be around seven and a half million dollars, so lots of moving parts on that project, but we'll bring it back. Uh further conversation.
Just a quick uh question on that on that bond, you know, there eighty percent of this, the. That building is that is that increase the value inflation and you're gonna be pretty close to covering that eighty percent sales to their property tax that they're paying?
Yeah, it sounds sounds like, Mayor, good question, is that they're proposing that final building to be larger um. Than the uh than the originally get planned. And that's part of the conversation is that they're looking at building a larger building on that third building, which would take some of the public event space. Um that was generally prescribed there, but would provide a larger building. I think when we talk to uh this assessing department, it's generally should be, I don't know. If you're looking at a per square foot, it should be about the same, whether it's hotel or apartment, in this case it'd be a combination. And then if we're looking at a larger private sector investment, you know, that'll change some things too, so. Again, these projects take a while and, you know, the market changes and they're looking at some adaptation of that.
Larger and it should increase the capacity to pay it off through property taxes.
Be close, okay. So lots lots going on, that'll, again, that'll come through September. Likely we'll have all of that information in front of you and some of which we'll be asking for decision on those issues.
All right, thank you, Mister Feelin. Move on to uh, you got any ten, you have ten, mayor council member comments? And if we can all be, Mister Feelin, uh time wise, we'll be really on something. Mister Lyell, anything? So Solsky, anything? Miss Lunskey, any comments?
Um I just wanna say thank you to Chief Lorenz for the tour and um that him and his staff the other week, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh Mister Kalami, any comments? This is a little, this looks like he's gone. Mister Vee.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd just like to acknowledge that uh this Scott Point uh is uh coming on the lyrics commission. And I think that's effective basically immediately, right?
Yeah, it's effective as we speak, I guess.
Yeah, and so it'll be great having a new board member coming on and I think also reach out and say thanks to Jake, who's been on there for. Four years than I probably realized, but um and the great work that he did. He is the current chair, so we'll have to elect a new chair. Uh but anyway, uh just.
All right, thank you, Mister Vee. Vice President Leatherly Palace.
No, thank you, Mister.
President Sandy.
So um first of all, Mister Feelin, um the uh Forty-second Street. Uh project sounded to me like you were, the city staff was gonna come to us and tell us what. Option we were gonna have when the last time we talked about it, we were gonna be presented the five different options again from which we were supposed to choose. This is your words, not mine, and we're gonna have lots of hard decisions to make. And so now you're telling, you're you're telling us that we're not gonna get to make the decision. City staff is gonna come and tell us how it has to be done?
Uh Council President Sandy, we we generally do rec, I don't know if there's many staff reports that we don't recommend an option similar to what we did on. Avenue Interchange. We did recommend the on alignment at forty-seven. Um you are gonna have probably of the five, you're gonna have two main options. We are going to recommend uh an option to move forward.
But that which is, that's been generally where city staff has been talking about, because it's probably the easiest. I I wouldn't.
We say the best.
Short's path, probably. Has there been any further discussion about sinking the intersection? You know, is that one of the options? I mean, I know it's one of the options. Mister Veen had a great idea. We sink that intersection, we can cover it, then you can have all sorts of green space. We can actually make the U N D golf course bigger rather than taking out.
I think that is one of the options we really looked at it because it was gonna be the cleanest and best. It's like the on alignment on forty-seven. However, there's concerns about, um you know.
Snow, water.
Taking out, um not, I would say just how much right away it kicks out by sinking it and. And it's hard to imagine the angles and and the sound, and I think council member being you or the you were on the sinking the intersection first. Back in when, you know, nobody was looking at it, but you'll have all those options. I just wanna prep you for next week that. Um you are gonna have options, but of course, we always recommend what we think is best. And in this case, it'll be another thing we're in concurrence with our North Port D O T.
Thank you, Mister Phil. Looking forward to that discussion. Mister Mayor, I I feel like I'm I'm uh. Uh hard on our park district, so I I wanna tell everybody, again, I think our park district does a fantastic job. I really do. They do such good work for our community, people that work there in the park more. Um uh they make all of us, I'm sure, very proud and because they do very good work. I just have issues. Even issues with some of the things that are going on with the park district. Um and uh lastly, um contrary to what Mister, we can't pronounce his last name, says. We don't owe it to their digital sign business to grant them signs. Their business is their business. It's not up to us to ensure that their business is is effective or profitable, so. I think again, having Mister Guston looking into our sign code and and uh what options we have, because. I for one would like to see us phase out all of those billboards first.
All right, thank you, President Sandy. I'm sure all of our consternation with the park district was just solved, so thank you. I was just gonna say, uh, you know, the high, this will be the last city council meeting here, as all goes as fine, we'll be moving back over to the council chamber, so. Uh gotta give this going some thanks. It served us, served us well at times and I think there's some memories here that we're all okay letting uh. Letting go. Uh will be one more committee, the whole meeting here. I believe we should be moving on and council chambers look great. But any of the council members haven't seen it yet, we can walk over there right now and get a little extra time. If, uh, any of the council members haven't seen it yet, we can walk over there right now and get a little extra time.
Technically, that's a meeting.
No, it's true. Well, I can, I can take two of you, two of you wanna go, all right, you can go on and go on. Uh, but with that, I hope everyone has a great evening and I look for a motion adjourned, move adjourned. Motion adjourned, uh, second from, uh, motion, Mr. Lyell, second from Mr. Solsky, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Next sign, appear adjourned.